Okay, we'd like to call the meeting order, um, six thirty-three. Um, next, we need to, uh, have an approval on the agenda.
We'd like to call the meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is seconded and approved. Um, next, we'll go to strategic planning.
We gotta have a roll call vote.
All right, straighten me up there, Julie.
All right. Schmidt.
Yes.
Haas.
Yes.
Merkel.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Prochnet.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that has passed. Um, next, we'll go to strategic planning. Um, that's where you want to take over, Jeff, or?
Sure, I can, I can take it from there, thank you. Uh, welcome, everybody. Uh, tonight's meeting is going to be largely geared around our strategic plan and the work that has been done. Uh, we have conducted, um, a set of surveys that went out to staff, parents, and community, uh, as well as students. Uh, we've conducted a equity survey that went out to staff, uh, students and parents. And then we have also done, uh, at least nine listening sessions and collected lots of different data. We've gone through a comprehensive needs assessment at each site, uh, and brought all that information together. We've had a strategic planning committee that's met three times over the last month. And that team consisted of just under fifty people, which includes students, staff, uh, parents, community members, city leaders, and, um, as well as, uh, building administration. And today, we're going to look at where that has all taken us and how those ideas have come together into what Ms. Gilman calls a plan on a page. Um, we've taken all that information and boiled it down to some, uh, a mission, a belief statements, mission statement, vision statement, and then some goal areas, um, uh, for us to consider. And with us tonight, too, is also the writing team, who has done an amazing job of taking all those different ideas and trying to get people's voice into those ideas. So when they look at that plan, it says, wow, that, I was a part of that process and the community can really see that. So they are here tonight to help talk about it. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Gilman from the Minnesota School Boards Association, who is going to be leading us through this evening.
Hey, thank you Superintendent Horton. And you did a nice job of framing the work that we have been doing over the last few months. I looked back at my notes today, and I think it was January eleventh when I met with the board and did a presentation on what we would be doing in the next few months. And lo and behold, we have accomplished, I think, everything. And now you are ready with your new strategic plan on a page. Um, Superintendent Horton, I think I am going to do a share screen. Make sure, you should have all received this ahead of time, but this is the culmination of all the work from you and all your stakeholders in the past few months. And your stakeholders included representatives of student body, staff, both licensed and non-licensed, your administrative team, you as a board, and also community members. And to, uh, do a recap of some of the things that we did, we started by looking at belief statements. And the belief statements were basically your values. We did this as a team and came up with the five that are listed here. Then we spent some time talking about the mission statement. We reviewed your former mission statement and talked about rewriting. And this is the, the new mission statement. Uh, provide an equitable and quality education that meets the need, uh, individual needs of our students to thrive in the twenty-first century. And then we talked about a vision statement and, uh, ended up, remember, vision statement is something you're going to put on that billboard on the highway. So it's going to grab people and say, why this school? Why do I want to enroll my, my child into the school district? And so the vision statement, uh, GFW, growing future world-class leaders. And so these are the items that we consider the foundational items of your strategic plan. Now, one thing that I should mention is, since our third strategic planning committee meeting, we worked on each of these foundational items, and then we turned it over to a writing team who did some final crafting, a little bit of, of maybe tweaked a few words and things like that. Um, so basically kind of did a cleanup for it, but we still maintain the integrity and the messaging that the strategic planning committee identified. And then we looked at focus areas and how we identified the focus areas were the themes that came through with the listening sessions, with the evaluations, the surveys that we, uh, sent out to the community and also internally. And then the feedback that we got from strategic planning committee members. So we landed with a focus area, and you can see, whoops, on the left-hand side here, of student achievement, finance, diversity, equity, and inclusion, community and family engagement, and the last one is positive school climate. Each of the focus areas has a goal, and the goals were the overall direction, what we will, or you will, or what GFW will accomplish, keeping in mind that your strategic plan is for the next three to five years. For each of the goals, there are objectives that put a little bit more meat into exactly how you're going to accomplish each of those goals. Now, with the goals and the objectives, the writing team, and you're going to hear from them in just a second, but your superintendent and the writing team then took your feedback from their draft goals from the last meeting, the last committee meeting, added in a few more items because you all had a chance to provide input on what might have been missing or what might have needed to be tweaked, things that we didn't want to forget about. And so what you see here is the almost final version of your strategic plan on a page. What we would like to do this evening is, uh, review the goals and objectives. And then as board members, if there is anything that you see here that you still have concerns about, things that should be, uh, identified in a different way, we do want to hear from you. So this evening, we won't be adopting the strategic plan. That's something that you'll likely do at a, an upcoming meeting, but this will be your, your glance at it. And then you'll have a chance to look at a final version. So with that, uh, Mr. Horton, I think I'm going to turn it back to you and your writing team if you'd like to walk through the goals and objectives.
Uh, absolutely, we can do that. And I invite the, um, the writing team to share their different thoughts on it. So I'm going to just kind of introduce it and, um, writing team members, please jump in and share your different thoughts, and we'll kind of just go kind of focus area by focus area. Uh, the first one being student achievement. Um, and there's two areas in this that are being focused on. The first one is really aligning to the Every Student Succeeds Act in World's Best Workforce. This is the federal and state legislation pieces that says, these are the things that the state and the federal government are saying we need to do. Um, and so that includes, um, ninety percent of all students, uh, graduating from high school, for example. That's under ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. And, uh, with no demographic group, meaning, um, any students in special ed, or seeing special education services, um, students of color, uh, any group has to, cannot be below eighty-five percent. Those are things that we're required to be working on. Um, it also includes things like career and college readiness and consistent attendance. And so that's what you see there in the first goal area. The second one is, how do you work on that? And this is where the, um, continuous improvement framework comes in. And how do you continue to work, uh, how do you research evidence-based practices? And how are you going to go about implementing those and making sure you're doing what you say you're going to do? Um, so that is the framework in which you can do the work for, to improve student achievement. Um, and we have with us tonight, uh, um, our people, we have staff that are on the continuous improvement teams, including, um, Mr. Langemoor and Ms. Blumhofer, who are on the continuous improvement teams at each of their sites, along with their building, uh, principals and other teachers. So, um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to them to talk about that because they really are on the ground with that continuous improvement team, doing that ground level, that ground level work with some of us. So, uh, team, what are your, some of your thoughts that you'd like to share around student achievement and why you felt that these were good goals?
Um, I guess getting into, into the, the second one a little bit, uh, you might notice as we go further into this that some of the different areas have dates that kind of set benchmarks as far as when we'll get to this stuff. But I, I think in the second one, i- it'll be nice to have the conversations at the building level kind of around this framework as to what specific steps do we need to do to kind of build those college readiness pieces and, and just kind of see how big the task at hand is and get, you know, feedback at the building level and, and get going from there. So. Yes, that covers my thoughts on the second one.
Um, I'll jump in here a little bit. We also had a, a bit of a conversation in terms of, um, when we look at the first one with the English language proficiency and the MCA growth, and just how important it is for us to, um, make sure that our English, English language learners are getting all they need to be successful. Um, we understand that, that we have had some work to do in that area, and we still have work to do in that area. And we just want to make sure that we're connecting those two items so that we can reach all of our learners.
Any other thoughts on, uh, the student achievement area that people would like to share?
I would just share that the, these goals are pretty broad and, you know, from more of like the MDE level, because then in our buildings, we can work specifically with our different teams, our MTSS teams, our CIT teams, um, our child study teams, or student study teams to help support our students at this level. So, um, this kind of just sets us up for, um, what our goals would be at different committee levels, too.
A, a, a piece I can share with that is that each building will be working on developing a school improvement plan. So upon adoption of a strategic plan, um, they will be setting out with their continuous improvement teams to set smaller level goals. These are broad because they're at the district level, and then MD is even broader at their level. So they'll get down really kind of into the, bring it down more to the, the classroom level, the student level, um, to really be making a difference in that, so. Um, so that's, that's some of the work that will happen post this. And those are things we can come back to the board and show to say, hey, you know what? Here's our school improvement plan, and here's, here's how we're working towards these goals at the site. Uh, do board members have any questions around the area of student achievement? For the writing team?
The, the only question I have is, I see the career and college readiness plan by eighth grade. And, um, Principal Glucka stated, you know, that they can do stuff after the fact. But like, you know, as students progress and they're, you know, following up and making sure they stay on their plan, so they get to the graduation rate. Um, I'm not sure if anything else is needed more, or if that could be monitored. You know, like, these are the broad goals, and there's better goals in the back, I know. So that's, that's just my question.
Yeah, I can address that. Um, so the career and college readiness plan, um, or goal helps with the students' individual plans. So in eighth grade, by ninth grade, they have, they're beginning those processes. They're taking the aptitude tests. They're making a plan on where they want to go so that during their high school careers, they can be taking classes that are aligned to it. They can have those conversations with their homeroom teachers or with our guidance counselor or myself, um, with all the people that are going to support them in, um, what that post-high school career or college experience is going to be for them. So just having that process start early, um, so that we can support them throughout high school is the goal. And yes, they'll be checked in on and followed up with yearly and more, hopefully, daily almost, um, with what their vision, what their plan is for their post, um, sec, their post-high school careers. Hope that answered the question.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions in this area of student achievement, or should we move to the next focus area? And we can always go back to if you give a thought later on, so it doesn't have to be so linear. Okay, finance. Um, in the area of finance, this is, uh, this is one that we felt was really important to be in there, um, given our current situation. So a GFW will develop and maintain a fiscally sustainable budget. Um, we've been deficit spending for, um, close to a decade. And so this is going to be, uh, our goal is to not do that. Um, and so the first step of that is getting out of the statutory operating debt. And, uh, to Mr. Langemoor's point about the dates, this one, we did feel needed dates because we needed to make, we needed to make progress and had to have those accountability marks in there. With, uh, student achievement piece, there's different aspects and different timings of things that, at the building level, that maybe they can be setting timelines for. Uh, but at this level, uh, we really felt that, you know, we have some goals that we need to set, and we need to hold ourselves accountable to that. So the first one would be to get out of statutory operating debt by fiscal year 2022. Um, and then to upgrade, update our fund balance policy. Uh, we currently have a fund balance policy, but to review that and put that in alignment with the Minnesota Department of Education and the auditors. The next step from that would be to, um, maintain a fund balance in alignment with that policy to make sure that we are in a good place. Um, our auditors had mentioned example, for example, we need to be at between eight and twelve percent. And in order to not have to borrow money, that's kind of where we need to be. Um, and then, uh, creating a sustainable replacement schedule. Our teachers would love the idea of having curriculum, new curriculum, and to replace that on a regular basis. Um, our transportation department would love to know that they can afford to get new vehicles when they need to get new vehicles. Our students and staff would love to know that as technology, uh, fades and becomes outdated that we have, um, a plan to replace that, so they can do the great things that they want to do. So, um, after we get, uh, our fund balance in order and we then can then delegate some funding for that replacement schedule in each of the departments. Um, and then we also put in the facility plan that, um, whether that be, uh, maintaining what we have and staying where we are, or that means exploration of other options that is a goal by 2025. Uh, questions, comments about that? Team, anything that you want to share about that piece? If there's no questions, we can go on to finance. And if people have questions, we can definitely circle back, or we can just go to, go to the next one, excuse me. But, uh, we can go back to finance. Uh, diversity, equity, um, and inclusion. Um, so this one, uh, is that we will develop and implement an equity framework. So this is a very broad goal. But again, on this one, uh, we did feel like, feel like we needed to put some dates on this one to hold ourselves accountable to those dates. And so the first step with this one would really be go and do some research. There are other school districts that have adopted, um, equity policies and have been doing this work. Uh, the twenty-four districts around the country that we've been meeting with around equity, some districts have these, some districts don't. And so the team felt that based on the equity diagnostic we did, based on, um, the direction that the Department of Education is, is saying we should go based on best practices, that we should really be looking at an equity policy. Um, from there, um, we create the framework and then we implement it. Now, what that looks like, we don't have an answer for yet. Uh, we need to do some research, we need to do some training and, uh, and then come up with some ideas. So our goal would be over the course of next year to develop a policy. And then from there, create a framework and then start an implementation plan for that framework. And that ties back to our other goals about, um, continuous improvement. And in terms of, uh, every student succeeds X in world best workforce, where we are asked to make decisions, um, that are equitable to, um, fund the programs. And I think, uh, English language proficiency was one of the areas mentioned earlier by Ms. Blumhofer about going back to how are we made ensuring that those learners have what they need to be successful? Because we are required to have ninety percent of students graduating, ninety percent of students passing the reading, ninety percent of students, um, passing the math with, uh, with no subgroup below eighty-five percent. So that, that's, that, that takes work, that, there, that's good work to be doing. But this policy would help us move in that direction. So that's, that's why this is there, and that was part of the timeline that we had for our, our work. Uh, team, what thoughts do you have about the, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion goal and objectives that you'd like to share?
I would just like to say that, um, you know, but all three of these say, develop, create, or create. And that just shows that we're in the beginning parts of this goal, which is great. But, um, as a district, it's a focus, and we want to make sure that in our strategic plan, um, people can see that we're working towards that and that it is a focus. And it's something that we do take very important, um, and we want to do it right, too. So. We had a really good conversation over it.
I, I kind of like that there's, there's just three points in there. It has the dates, it keeps us moving, but it gives us a lot of flexibility to use that diagnostic tool and figure out what we're doing well, what should be a high priority, what, what do we need to emphasize? Um, what should we focus on improving first? So I, I like that, again, like, like they were saying, it has the benchmarks to keep things moving, but it also has some ambiguity in it in that way, too.
One thing Principal Glucka referenced was, uh, uh, some information from NIRN, the National Implementation Research Network, NIRN. And what she was referring to was the different stages of, um, implementation science. And so the first stage is, um, exploration, and that's where we are in some of our areas. These are new things, and we, we have to spend time in there, and that's, and that's the first step. Once you go there, you get to, uh, installation. And in the installation phase, you're working towards sustainability. And then you get to your initial implementations phase, that's the third phase. And then you get to full, uh, implementation, which is usually around eighty percent or so of, um, based on different measures. And that's a two-to-four-year process to go through all that and to really do it well. Um, and that's coming out of, again, uh, NIRN, the National Implementation Research Network. So she had made some reference to that. And so these are areas that we're going to be, um, working on, and that's just where we are today. Um, when we come back, um, and update our strategic plan in three to five years, we'll be at a different place with that.
And I guess I would just add that, um, you know, even though we are in this beginning stages, um, the Department of Education has their Minnesota Equity Commitments. And we certainly are, um, looking at those and reminding ourselves of those as we meet and as we make decisions even at this time.
Uh, members of the board, do you have questions around diversity, equity, inclusion? Or did this create any new questions going back to the other two focus areas?
Um, I guess my question here, it says by 2022, does that mean by the start of the 2022 school season, which would be June, correct? Or? First, the first one says by 2022, GFW would develop an equity policy.
Um. We could interpret, we could interpret how you feel that, that goal should be. I, I looked at that team jump in, I kind of was thinking the 2022 school year. So we would take the next school year to develop that, but perhaps we weren't clear enough in, in stating that.
That's, that's, I mean, that's fine, and that's, I think it's going to take some time. And I think we want to do it right. Um, so. But I might take that differently, but I mean, I'm okay with that. But, but I would prefer it to be in 2022, that new school year. I don't know.
That's, uh, you know, as Ms. Gilman talked about, this is a, a good chance for us to make some adjustments. And so that could be some clarifying language we add. We could say by the 2022, by the 22, 23 school year, the start of the 22, 23 school year, we could, we could rephrase that a little bit. Other questions or thoughts that folks would like to share on the diversity, equity, inclusion focus area? Or any of the others? Okay, the next area.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, I just, I just said I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, in the area of community and family engagement, GFW will empower families to foster partnerships to support students birth to twenty-one within and outside of our schools. The language of birth to twenty-one really starts, um, that's where we start. And Ms. Yohar here is here, and she works with our early childhood programming. And we start supporting students right away. Um, she is contacting families very shortly after, uh, the birth of a child to get them information on how they can be supported. And we service students all the way up to twenty-one. Uh, folks may not realize that, but, um, we don't stop at eighteen. We go through age twenty-one. So that's why we included the birth to twenty-one. Um. And in this area, we'll be ensuring equitable access to programs and initiatives. So part of that is in the equity piece is about, um, making sure people have access. Um, strengthening and expanding family engagement partnerships, uh, creating communication plans. We heard that people, um, have seen some improvements in communication, but still would like to see more communication. And so what is our plan, what, what communication plans are we creating around the different things we're doing? Um, and then also working with our community with career and college readiness opportunities. We've had some folks that have talked about doing, um, different internships. And there is even recently a, a student that I'm aware of that was interested in becoming a superintendent and, uh, what that was entails. So how are we, how are we creating those opportunities to, uh, support our students in career and college readiness? And this could be work experience, uh, this could be regional partnerships. There's a lot of different areas you could go with this. So, um, there's work to be done there, and I think we've had some of that in the past. And, uh, that's something that we can, we can do some work on. So that was the community engagement, community and family engagement section. So questions and thoughts around that area? And writing team, please feel free to add some. I know we spent a lot of time in these last couple areas trying to get the language right.
We had a lot of conversation about how we can do a better job of making sure that we are getting families involved in our school and, and making sure that that involvement continues throughout the kids' experience while they are at GFW. Um, it seems as though we, we get lots of involvement. When kids are in preschool, they're in elementary school, it's, it's really easy to get parents involved and, and reach out and, um, make sure that there's opportunities there. Um, and just wanting to make sure that, that those opportunities continue all throughout their, their school career.
I agree with you, Mandy. Um, I feel like this is an important one just because, um, as we start an early I agree with you, Mandy. Um, I feel like this is an important one, just because um, as we start in early childhood, we always tell the parents that they're the first and foremost. Important teacher in a child's life. And so this is just such a great partnership. For the school and the families, so.
And we also brought in that community piece and just making sure that um. That the communities feel like they are just as much a part of our school as the school is a part of the community. And making sure that we have opportunities for our students to become involved in our communities. And vice versa. So we spent a lot of time talking about that as well and the importance of it.
We tried to tie these back to our belief statements. Um, as Ms. Gilman kinda shared in the beginning and maybe you can go back to the top there, but. Uh, for a split second, but in the belief sections, we shared about um. A little bit higher. There we go. Our school is the heart of a unified community. Um, we talked about that and then also a place of mutual respect where. Our voices are heard, considered and valued. And just because we can't always do everything that folks would always like, that doesn't mean we can't include them. In processes to give them an opportunity to private input and to help them feel considered and valued. And we can do that in a respectful way and. And uh, so this was us kinda tying back to some of those different belief statements. Uh, members of the board, do you have questions around that uh, fifth goal, fourth focus area?
I don't have questions, but I will just comment that I think this is a strong area for improvement and. I'm happy to see that we can hopefully strengthen it and make it better here, so.
Yep, I was just gonna say the same thing. And I think, I think it's a great area to focus on as well.
Uh, the sixth goal. Or the fifth area um, is positive school climate. And so in this one, GFW will inspire a shared sense of community built on trust, collaboration and safety. Where individuals are encouraged to thrive and grow. And so the way we'd be looking at measuring some of that is through collaboration with our stakeholders, which is, you know, we, we saw in our strategic planning group, we had lots of different stakeholders involved in that and that's. That's what we mean by stakeholders. GFW will develop a positive school climate model where all individuals can show up as their full selves. Um, that's, that comes right from some of our student language and um. There are different ideas and concepts and models out there for positive school climate. So there's some work to be done and some research should be done on what is it that, that means? Um, if you take a look at the school climate center, they would say. Positive school climate is, you know, anybody who walks into your building, what are they feeling in that moment? And that, so it's an oversimplification, but if I'm a community member and I walk in or if I'm a parent or a staff member or. A student, what is it? How are you feeling and what is that experience? And. That would be something that um, we'd be looking at researching and, and saying, okay, this is kinda how we're gonna define that for ourselves. And then we will create an implementation plan to do that. So again, it's kinda the implementation. We, we need to figure out what it is that we define as a positive school climate. And then we need to go through and we need to implement that. And then uh, and monitor that we're doing a great job with that and you know, success goes up and down with those and that's part of the implementation sciences that is, it ebbs and flows, you make adjustments and. And retrain and, and re-implement some stuff. And then uh, the last one is GFW will develop a system of mental health information. Access and support for students. So helping increase access to mental health supports. Whether that be in the school and the community, but get it helping break down barriers to increase access and get information out there, so. Team, thoughts that you wanted to share about uh, positive school climate?
One thing that we did spend some time talking about was the importance of making sure that we have those mental health. Supports in place for our students. Um. It, it seems to be hitting even harder these days. And, and as a school, we need to make sure that we have. What our students need to be successful, including their mental health needs.
Team, any other thoughts, members of the board, any questions about uh, the positive school climate section or just the, the, the strategic plan in general?
Um, was just gonna ask, is there any? Way that you could add in for the mental health information access and support for students? Um, I mean, even just staff in general. Uh, I guess I'm not entirely sure what the resources are for staff. As far as mental health. You know, support things like that. I don't know if that's, if that's an option or how that all works, but. That would be my suggestion for maybe an addition or something to work on.
Uh, one way to approach that would be to uh, eliminate the word students on there and just put a period after support. And then that would just be a little bit more all encompassing. We do do some things right now with that. Um, and um. Ms. Elmer, who is uh, one of our, our wellness leaders. Um, is frequently trying to find ways to make people smile and cheer them up and, and shares out resources with that, so. Um, well, that's me walking in the office and seeing her in a. Great St. Patrick's Day outfit or sending out emails for, hey, this is uh, here's some great ways to just. To be positive and how to truly focus on that and, and some strategies to go with that. So there are some things that we are doing and. Uh, we definitely want to take care of our staff members too. So I, I think that uh. That would fit very well into some of the passion areas that our staff have right now and would like to probably continue to work on. Her camera's off right now, but I know she's going to put on her outfit and she's gonna pop back on the screen with that outfit.
I do not want to frighten you, so no, I will not be putting it on. Little kids enjoy it, not so much adults always.
You look great. Uh, so how would you feel about us just putting a period after support to make it more broad? And that could even, with family support.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Yeah, I, I, I don't want the. In just, you know, not include staff or even family members for that matter. I mean. Yeah, I just think it's. Everything's in a stressful time and maybe things will calm down in the next couple of years, but I would, I mean. I know that there's resources out there for other people, but I think it would be great to not limit it to just students. So. I think a period at the end sounds great. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but.
I would agree.
So some feedback we've heard so far is a little bit more specification on the dates for some of the goal areas. And then uh, on that six point three, just making that a little bit more all inclusive. So taking out the, for students and just ending it, so it's more broad. Other feedback and thoughts that people'd like to share?
No, I think it's a. Good start.
And I would just add in, uh, board members, is there anything? That you remember we talked about that isn't reflected here? We tried really hard. To incorporate all the ideas, but we. You know, if there is anything that we haven't emphasized or that we've missed. Let's talk about that and it would, it definitely was not intentional. So if there's things that you want to make sure are included, we can certainly do that.
Think we have hit. Most of them all the things.
While you're processing through that, I, I do want to give a shout out to our writing team who was just absolutely amazing and um. The conversations and the ideas that came up um, and. The focus to detail even on, even on a specific word and going back and forth and going to do some research and. I mean, we set a time limit for the meeting and I think we all looked at the clock and we're like, oh my gosh, like we're, we're overtime, but people just kinda wanted to keep going and. And uh, Ms. Gilman had to tell us, no, you don't have to, you, you, because we wanted to be together and she said, no, no, you're okay. Uh, this is good, like you're, so I mean. A great group of um, passionate people for education and um, some real wisdom there. So thank you to the writing team for. For all of your extra efforts to, to help get us to this point to have a conversation tonight. Um, it was, you, you were awesome.
I would certainly echo that too. And if I remember correctly, I think that uh, one of the days that the group met was probably a day that they. Weren't necessarily uh, on duty, so to speak. It was a, a vacation, a holiday, a time off day and so. Hats off for the dedication and doing that as well.
Yeah, it was. It was, they were uh, they were finding ways to, to help make this happen. So really appreciate that.
We also had a lot of fun doing it too, so. It's good. Yeah, there was plenty of laughter and plenty of coffee that went around.
Anything else from the writing team or um, Mr. Horton, anything else you'd like to share in regards to the work that the group did?
No, I agree. There, we had some good laughs during the process with this. Uh, a lot, a little bit of fun with it, but also got some good work done. It was uh, it was a lot of fun working with them and. It's a lot of fun just going through the whole process to really listen to the community. To um, offer opportunities for people to share their thoughts and um. But I also feel that sometimes when you see a strategic plan. You try to encompass everything. And it becomes unattainable. I feel like this has really captured the, the major themes. Of uh, the community. And I think it's put it into some tangibles that we can say, okay, we can work on that. And not everything will always work out smoothly. The life ebbs and flows. COVID nineteen is a great example of that. We might say, oh geez, we gotta adjust a little bit. And that'll happen um, in different ways and forms, but we have some, I think this gives us some direction that is encompassing of. Of our community and some, and it's some good work and it's aligned to. Areas that we need to be focusing on, both from a, a local area, saying that this is important, but also from a, a state and national level to say, these are some things you should be focusing on. So I think it's, I think it covers a lot. But is also attainable.
Well, it was a very thoughtful process with everyone involved and for board members and for community members who might be listening in. You've heard me say before that the strategic plan really is now your visionary roadmap for the next three to five years. You've identified those key themes to address issues, challenges, concerns. You have brought stakeholders together, so you've truly listened to the voice of. The entire community. So there, you, you're really, you've got buy-in now. You will get to see this again at a meeting where you will do a final adoption of it and. The next time you see it, we'll do a little bit of cleanup with the uh, six point three and then a few things with the timelines. In here as well, just to make sure that they're very clear. And, and that was a very helpful suggestion too, Drew. To make sure you're talking about the beginning of twenty twenty-four or the end of twenty twenty-four. I think the other thing to remember that it is a, a process, so three to five years, so. And not an expectation that everything's gonna get accomplished in the first one or two years, but. Uh, this is an example of how the work team, the work writing team has really paced themselves too. And I think they've been strategic, if you will, in saying. Here's some things that we should probably work on sooner versus later. And so all things will um. Come to fruition over the years. As board members, once you've adopted this, it'll be important that you use this as a, a living document. We'll talk about that a little bit more when we look at the board self-evaluation. But when uh, your superintendent and board chair bring decisions to you at the board table. Make sure that the actions that you're taking are accountable or a link back to the strategic plan. So that you can, if it's not clear to you, ask. Uh, now, how does that fit into our strategic plan? And then the response will probably be, this ties back to student achievement. Under goal number one and objective number one point three. So those are, are some of the ways that you can make sure. You're being accountable with the work that you and everyone else have done. The other piece to this is. Uh, you'll remember that uh, behind the scenes to accomplish. The objectives for each of these goals will be a lot of action plans. So I know that your superintendent and your, your uh, writing team, your administrative team. Have already talked about some action steps that they will use to accomplish each of these objectives. And what you'll be hearing back from your superintendent is an update on where you're at with things, how you're doing. Uh, and at the same time, remember that heaven forbid, if we have something like a pandemic that comes up. In the next year, it is okay to just take a little bit of a step backwards and say, you know, are we still on track? Are we moving ahead with things or do we need to take a quick break? Um, pivot a little bit, if you will. For anything unexpected that comes up. Um, but you should be having some regular updates on the strategic plan and at least annually take time to do a little bit of a deeper dive. And uh, have some accountability of what we've achieved. I, I would also suggest too, once the board does the final adoption. To make sure that you share this document with all of the strategic planning committee members. And uh, along with that, a sincere word of thanks for their work too, because a lot of them put in. Many hours along with the board members in helping develop this. So just some things to be thinking about. Moving forward with this, with the strategic plan. So with that, any? Other questions that I can answer? Related to that? Okay. If not, let's transition into the next part, uh, talking about the board self-evaluation. Now, this is the time where the writing team members know that this is gonna be really riveting and they wanna stick around. Um, but I'm just gonna say, if you do have other commitments, other things, you are certainly welcome to depart at this point. We're, we're not gonna, you know. Not gonna keep you here if you do have other things, but just a, a thank you. If you are leaving, we just do wanna say thank you so much for all of your work. And I think your superintendent will probably be meeting with you one more time to do some final tweaking, so you're not off the hook just yet, but anyway. But thank you again for your help this evening.
The coffee ready.
Get the coffee ready, coffee and, and chocolate, I'm hoping for everyone, right?
Invited me to be a part of this. My kids are here, so I'm gonna go.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Mandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, writing team.
Okay. For the board, then we're gonna transition to talking about the board self-evaluation. And this is a chance really just to tie this all together for you. The timing on this, when I started, first, first started talking to your superintendent about strategic planning back at, uh, what was the end of last year? Um, this is just such a wonderful opportunity. For you as a board team. You have three new board members. You are in a reforming stage, so to speak, as a board team. And so. This is a way for you to all. Really be on the same page and uh. helping develop the strategic plan is, is the beginning stages of that. So as we, we transition and talk about the board self-evaluation and how that all ties to the strategic plan, I want to put up the board governance model and you had a chance to see this at each of the strategic planning committee meetings. And it is also included in our phase one training for new board members and in our phase three training for high performing boards. So at the top of the board governance model, the board governs, that is your role as elected board members. And at the top of this diagram, you'll see that your responsibilities at the, the very top, the 12 o'clock point is to establish, you establish expectations and parameters and you set a strategic plan. So hats off to you for having a strategic plan in place and an updated one too. And in addition to that, you adopt policies, you set the budget and you approve contracts. And then you will see that the lower part of the diagram, the superintendent manages, the superintendent provides leadership and supervision. And so Mr. Horton's responsibilities are then to take those goals and objectives of the strategic plan that you've developed and start putting them into action. So he's got plans, he will have procedures in place, he will identify staff who will work with him. And then he will start to implement them and he will monitor them as well. At the same time, you know that the arrows, or you can see that the arrows are going back and forth. He's always going to be giving you updates. Don't let him off the hook, by the way, either. So if you haven't had an update on something, it's fair game to always ask, where are we at with that on the strategic plan? Remember the friendly neighborly line, the dotted line that goes through the center means that there's always communication between you as a board, elected board members and your superintendent. And the most important thing in this diagram is student achievement for all. And I do believe that with the strategic plan you've developed, you have moved yourselves forward for that student achievement for all. Anybody have any questions or comments about the board governance model? If not, I am going to share with you, and I do believe that you receive these documents from your superintendent as well. So you'll have them as an easy reference. So where are you headed now as a board? You have your strategic plan in place. And it's going to be really important that you do an alignment of goals. We call this the strategic governance framework. And what you will see, and you also saw this during the strategic planning process as well, is that in this diagram with your strategic plan in the red box in the center, your, your new district goals that you're going to be working on over the next three to five years, you want to make sure now to align them, to align those goals with your superintendent's goals and also with your board team goals. Those goals then align with the buildings and the sites, the staff, the classroom and the students. So now that you've got that strategic plan in place, there are no secrets, there are no surprises. Everybody knows what the expectations are. Everybody knows what the direction is. And just like with the board governance model, when you have your goals aligned, at the top of this diagram, again, the most important thing, student achievement for all. And when I think about that, I can't help but remember the wonderful students that you had on your strategic planning committee, those that, and also those that participated in the listening session. You have some wonderful, caring, respectful, awesome students in your school district. And I do remember, I think it was Catherine, one person that does come to my mind, who was on the strategic planning committee, who thanked you for providing that voice for students. And so this is what it's all about and don't ever hesitate to hear that student voice. I know that you have a student representative on your board and I think that is, again, a wonderful way for you to keep that communication going. So next I'm going to move to another share screen as we keep this discussion going. And I want to talk about the standards for board leadership. Again, you see this in phase one and also phase three, the high performing board. So as board members, there are five standards that you operate under. And they include standard number one, which is conduct and ethics. And this is about how, how you as a board team work together, communicate, respect, trust and work towards those goals within the district, the new goals that you've just set. Standard number two is vision. That's that big picture, that big picture of where you are headed. And you've got the big picture now. There's no doubt about it with your new strategic plan. The third standard is structure. That includes your physical and organizational structure. So physical structures are going to be your buildings. Organizational structures are going to include staff and curriculum and technology. The fourth standard is accountability. Here, a lot of the accountability is related to student performance and student achievement. And then the fifth standard is advocacy and communication. And this is how you as board members and as a board team, remember I talked a lot about board team being elected board members and your superintendent, that you need to be joined at the hip in the work that you do. And so under advocacy and communication, this is how you advance or share your vision, your goals with the community and communicate that with them. And this is the, the one time where I say that it's so important for you as board members to be a cheerleader for your school district, because if you can't tell the good stories and advocate for the GFW school district, who's going to do it? And maybe it's time that somebody else be on the board that can effectively communicate that. So advocacy and communication is another standard. Now underneath each of the standards, you'll notice that there are what we call benchmarks, A, B, C, D, E, and sometimes it's F and G. There's enough, there's a variety of benchmarks for each of these standards. And I'm going to do a tie-in to why that's important in just a second. I'm going to stop sharing again. Those standards are actually the questions, those benchmarks, I should say, are actually the questions that were on that board self-evaluation that you took. And as we talk about having board team goals, it will be important for you as a board to do a self-evaluation on an annual basis. It sets a wonderful precedence. You evaluate your superintendent, your superintendent ensures that an evaluation is conducted for all staff. And so why wouldn't you as a board also take some time to do an evaluation or an assessment? And all of you, I think we might've been missing one, but I think most of you took the self-evaluation. You'll remember that it was 70, about 72 questions that you did it anonymously. Because we, we aren't so concerned as to who said what as much as we are about how you felt in general about the, each of the questions. So each of the questions then did tie back to the benchmarks. And I am going to scroll us through a few pages here. As I'm doing that, let me just pause for a second with the things that I have shared at this point. Board members, do you have any questions about anything, anything that you want me to repeat or anything that was not clear to you at this point? Okay. If not, what you see on the, I believe it's the fifth page, I think it's the fifth page in, yeah, the fourth page in actually. This is an overview report. It's the aggregate data of all the responses that you provided. And so let me just set the tone for this, kind of frame it for you, if you will. What you see down the left-hand side is each of the standards, standards one through five. Across the top, you'll remember that when you answered the questions, your options were always, most of the time, some of the time, never or don't know. And so when I take a look at this aggregate data, I always like to look for the number or the percentage of responses always and most of the time. Reason I, I combine those two is because there might be a question that I say always and Casey might say most of the time. So it's pretty subjective in that respect. But if you're responding always or most of the time, I think it shows that there is a lot of agreement amongst the board and a lot of overall support for that particular category. The next thing I take a look at is the numbers of some of the time. The percentage there of the yellow responses, some of the time is an indicator that you as a board team will want to move some of the time up to always or most of the time. Then I take a look at the responses that are in red, the percentage. And those are the nevers. So never could mean that you just truly never do that or discuss that as a board team. It could mean that since you have a lot of new board members, that you just haven't been on the board long enough to see that particular activity or process happen. And then the final response, don't know in black. And so again, don't know means that you probably just don't know. It could be an indicator that you are a newer board member and again, you haven't had that experience. So when I look at those responses that are red or black, the messaging there is those are opportunities for educating and informing. And usually between your board chair and your superintendent, they'll start taking some notes saying, oh yes, that's right. This might be something that we'll want to talk about with the board, make sure they're clear and they understand that particular topic. And so what you can see with your overall responses, I, I always add up the, most of the time in the always, and for standard number one, if I did my math correct here, 54% of you were in the always, most of the time. For vision, 63% always, most of the time. Structure, 46%. Accountability, 29%. And advocacy and communication, 50%. And as a general rule of thumb, you want to move towards at least 50% of always or most of the time. And really in most of your categories, considering again, that you're a fairly new board and your superintendent took this survey as well. So all of you are fairly new. Many of you are fairly new. Your responses are either well above that or are moving in that direction. So that is a, a very positive thing. Any questions or comments about what you see in the overview report? Okay. If not, I'm going to start walking you through the rest of the survey. But before I do, I want to make sure to be clear on a couple of things for you and for those who are listening in this evening. With this evaluation, it is not a pass or fail. It is not graded and it is, there are no right or wrong answers. So you as board members responded as you saw the question and as you knew it at the time that you took it. And again, all of you took it just within the last, I think, couple of weeks. So it's very, it's very fresh in your minds. This tool is an opportunity to, first of all, first and foremost, pat yourself on the back. Because what you are going to see is that there are a lot of positives with your board team where you are cohesive, you are in agreement. And so this is an opportunity to celebrate those strengths. We also encourage that you take this assessment on an annual basis. And when you do that, you're going to be able to start charting your progress because this tool is longitudinal. So now you've taken it in 2021. When you take it next year, hopefully, you will have both years results. So you can start doing some comparisons of how you have moved one way or the other on the, with the responses. The other thing that I often am asked is why weren't there any open-ended questions? And we, we do that for a couple of reasons. One, it is a copyrighted tool that we purchased from Washington State School Directors Association, who are our counterparts, our MSBA counterparts. So we are not able to make any changes. We, we selected the tool because they use the same standards that we use, the five standards for board leadership. They didn't have open-ended questions and so we did not make changes or could not make any changes. And then we use this as an opportunity for discussion. So if there are some questions or comments, we can talk about them this evening as we're walking through the, each of the sections. So at the end of the day, the goal for you to take this board self-evaluation is to identify goals for yourself. It is to align your board team goals with the goals of your new strategic plan. And it's also a way for you to move to that high performing board status, which is so important. Because we know that when the board team is working together and all the cylinders are firing, firing at the same time, that it sends positive messages throughout the school, throughout the community. And you know that from your work as board members, your, your community, internal and external, they are holding you accountable. They're watching you as they should. And so this is a, a way to help you become a really strong board team. Questions or comments? About the tool? Okay. Then what I'm going to do is share with you the individual questions that were on the self-evaluation. I'm going to frame these for the first few, so you kind of get a flavor of what you're seeing. And then give you a chance, if you want to make some comments or have some thoughts about what you're seeing and maybe some ideas of what are next steps. I've also highlighted some things too, that want to make sure that we, we address on your behalf. So if you don't share them, I will certainly bring those up. So on the following pages, then what you will see is always the standard number, we're doing standard number one, conduct and ethics, which is how you as a board team interact. And benchmark of success A is highlighted with questions number three and four. And benchmark of success A is conducting board and district business in a fair, respectful and responsible manner. And the questions here, basing your decisions on what's best for student success and committed to a clear and shared purpose. And when I look at your responses, this tells me that you are in agreement with some opportunities that the couple of folks said some of the time with some opportunities to move those forward with the questions. Or with the benchmarks, I should say. And then as we move to the next page, we're still under standard number one, conduct and ethics. And now we're talking about benchmark of success B. And that's ensuring that you as a board are accountable and open to the public, looking for divergent perspectives in your decision-making process. And you have certainly done that through the strategic planning process by bringing in community members, stakeholders who can help provide feedback. So here we see question five talks about providing information to the public that supports board discussions and decisions. Question six talks about following a defined process for gathering input prior to making critical decisions. And I would say here that as a board team, and I'm actually going to toss this one back to you in just a second. But because we've got a don't know and we've got some, some of the times here as board members, what else would be helpful for you in gathering input prior to making those critical decisions? Anybody want to share? When you're making the tough decisions. When you're making the tough decisions, what else would be helpful?
I think for me, a couple of things came up pretty quickly as a new board member. And just, you know, not always knowing what goes into those areas enough. So that's just myself, but I think as we go on, that should improve.
So for newer board members and a newer superintendent, sometimes you have to go slower to move faster, so keep that in mind. And I think as board members, don't hesitate to let your superintendent and your board chair know what additional information you might need. I think Drew brings up a good point too. Sometimes when it's just all so new. And I I remember that is, you know, from being a a board member myself, when everything is so new, it's just a lot to digest. And so it it may mean during this time that even additional information is provided to you. Maybe some uh additional uh background information, but never hesitate to ask those questions. What about other board members? Anything else you can think of that would be helpful? Anyone? Otherwise, I'm going to keep moving you along. Question seven talks about carrying out an annual assessment of your performance. And that is what you have done with the board self-evaluation. Now I should ask for the uh the returning or the seasoned board members. Um, let's see, Marissa, you might know the answer to this. Have you had a chance as a board to do a self-assessment before?
No, this is the first time I've done it and this would be my year three on the board.
Okay, sounds good. So certainly we know taking that time is important. And I, this would be one of those things that you might want to make as a goal to do an annual assessment. And then you can see that a year from now, doing that and taking some time to visit, whether it's having me come back and visit with you or whether you have the conversation uh yourself, you'll notice that probably everybody's going to say, yeah, always, always, we do carry out an annual assessment. And then uh likewise, question number eight talks about setting goals for improvement. And Marissa, again, I'm I'm going to come back to you on this one. Have you as a a board team in the past, have you set goals for yourself as a a board team?
I do not recall doing that.
Okay, all right. So we will, we will get you moving in that direction too. So it becomes just part of your your routine practice and protocol as a board. Anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make? About this set of questions, I'm going to keep scrolling on, but that doesn't mean we can't go back.
Um, I'll throw something out there.
Yes, definitely. Thanks, Mr. Horton.
This is something that um we'll be doing and we're starting the process with those continuous improvement teams. Be doing with building teams as well, where they'll, we'll take a a rubric like this or framework. And we did this with our continuous improvement team, started the year and said, okay, what does a good continuous improvement team look like when it's high functioning? And so they went through there and they ranked it. And um we're going to kind of continue to do that. So just so you know that at the school level, we're asking teams to kind of do some of that themselves. And that's part of us making sure that we're we're doing things well.
Great.
So you should, if so, if there's ever a question later, you you should be able to ask me and say, hey, you know, how are those continuous improvement teams doing? And I have a rubric that they've been working with to say, hey, here's kind of how they're self-raiding themselves and here's kind of what they're working on. And also, when you have turnover, um for example, when three new board members come on, it's going to shift your scores a little bit. And so it might not always be continual growth. You might see, oh, well, we dropped in this area and you kind of readjust. And um, you know, you have someone like Gail come and and share some of this information.
Good feedback. And you know, that is a a good point I should mention too. When you think about a newly formed board, and I didn't talk about the stages of board development, but certainly from MSBA with some of our trainings, you you hear us have that conversation. But with a new board, we talk about the stages of board development. And the first one is called forming, which is really what you have done over the last year. So you formed with having a new superintendent and new board members. And this is um that time where, you know, you're you're kind of trying to figure out what your role is as a board member and as a superintendent maybe too. And uh in figuring out other board members and uh how you interact. This has been a very interesting time too, because some of you only know uh COVID board membership or boardsmanship, um because you've done a, you know, needed to do a lot of virtual meetings. But there's the forming stage, there's the storming stage. The storming stage comes when, you know, all of a sudden, you know, you kind of like, I kind of get this now. And so you might not all be in agreement. You're trying to figure out again uh what information folks need and how everyone's going to react to uh conversations that come up to the board, uh decisions that come to the board. Norming is the third stage and that's when things start to kind of fall into place. You you know what's expected of you, you know how to prepare for a board meeting, you know who to ask questions of. And then um things start to get real comfortable in the work that you do. The the next stage, the fourth stage is performing. And that's where we really want to get you to, and that's this whole process with strategic planning and with doing the self-assessment. We want you to be a high-performing board so that things really start clicking. The one caution when you are in that high-performing stage is that sometimes you might move too quickly for your community. So that means that many times you'll want to bring your community along. You don't want your community to think you're a rubber stamp because you're not, obviously. You do your homework and you work together and you're performing at a fast rate. But what it means is that uh as a decision is being made at a board meeting, it will be important for your chair or whoever's presiding at the meeting to always provide some background information and explain that, um you know, we're ready to make this decision this evening. But for the community, we want them to know that we have taken two meetings, two study sessions to review this. We've asked all the questions. Our superintendent has provided us with lots of background information. And now tonight, we're ready to make a decision. You know, a good example of that would be your strategic plan. When you do the final adoption, it probably will be a very fast decision. A motion to approve and a second and you will have adopted it. So what will be important for your board chair to explain that uh this is a process that has happened over a period of months and lots of involvement from stakeholders and lots of information. And so you can use that to model how you um explain to the public and help the public understand the work that you have done when you get to that high-performing stage. And then the last stage of board development, we call deforming or reforming, which means that you have newly elected board members or a new superintendent. And that's exactly where you started uh just in the past few months, where you've had lots of reforming. So it was a time of saying goodbye to those that had served on the board and as superintendent and then a a time of saying hello and uh reforming with a new board. So I think that's really important to keep that in mind as you are are moving forward. Other questions or comments? I um want to draw your attention to question number eleven, using written protocols for interactions. And I am not sure if there are any written protocols for you as a board, but many boards do have some protocols that are written so that when newly elected board members join the team, they have an understanding of chain of command. They have an understanding of uh interaction with a mentor, if you have mentors. Uh, you have many times a protocol as boards for who contacts your legal counsel. You have hired legal counsel, so who can contact legal counsel? Can any board member call legal counsel or does it, usually it needs to be your board chair and your superintendent, sometimes a business manager. But having those written protocols in place, it almo- it also would be things such as when you're contacted by community members, how do you respond? Do you respond? What if a community member comes to you and they are having a real struggle with a a teacher? And they want you to fix it. Having those discussions and those written protocols of how you're going to handle that. Because you as board members, your power is at the board table, so you can't fix it. But what you can do is listen, uh have empathy for the concerns and then help the whoever is approaching you or whoever is asking the question, help them understand that there are processes in place, that you have a chain of command and direct them to the chain of command or to your superintendent. So I'm not sure, did um board members who have been on for a while or Superintendent Horton, are there some written protocols that the board has developed already?
I think we have some of those, but not everything you discussed.
Okay, sounds good. So that might be something that you'll want to take some notes on. If you need additional support from me or from MSBA on that, let me know. There are some school districts that have some, I'm I'm learning over the years, have uh some written protocols that I think are nice models that you could maybe use. And and then uh di- adapt them to your school district. Because just what you do, your protocols for GFW may not be the same for the next district or um any other district. But certainly something to think about. And I think for newly elected board members, that would be really helpful. Okay, the next set of questions are still under conduct and ethics, benchmark of success D. This talks about policies. And keep in mind as board members that you are very fortunate in that the policies are there for you. MSBA creates model policies and we watch the legislature and um both federal and national, and we create those policies for you as our model policies. And then whenever something new that you need to adopt comes your way, we have it there for you. It'll be brought to your board for your attention. And then you have the opportunity to adopt it as is or adopt it as revised uh to meet the needs of the GFW school district. And Superintendent Horton, I think you have been reviewing policies quite a bit too, to get things up to date and and make sure everybody understands them. And okay. The, I I will just say for board members, what MSBA suggests is that you should be reviewing probably one-third of your policies every year. So that by the time you get through the first three years as a board member, you will have touched each policy and know that it's out there and reference it. And your policies are what you use to help you make decisions. And then the other policies that you'll touch during the year are those model policies that come your way based on legislation. Or you uh got to adopt some policies based on the pandemic this year too. Uh, question fourteen talks about collaborating across the region, state, nation. Some ways that you can do that are just simply participating in your associations, MSBA, our leadership conference, our Friday chats from our government relations team. We have coffee and conversations on Fridays also. And I believe all of you should be receiving those emails. So if you haven't participated in any of them, pop in and you have a chance to interact with other board members. They are also recorded, so those are available to you too. If you are not able to participate, you can at minimum listen to them and learn from that as well. But taking advantage whenever you can, uh when we do our our trainings. Now we are doing a lot of virtual trainings, but for those of you that, well, even in our uh phase one and phase two, you know that we gave you opportunities to do some meet and greet with folks. So those are times that you can be collaborating and sharing with one another. Any questions about what you see up on the screen right now? The next set of questions talk about healthy relationships by communicating supportively, inspiring, motivating and empowering others and exercising influence in a positive manner. And here you all seem very, for the most part, I think, very cohesive. Now, question fifteen is interesting because it talks about providing an opportunity for stakeholders, such as staff, students, parents and community members to make presentations. So it looks like you have those opportunities. Uh, looks like question seventeen, being respectful of one another. All positive attributes for you. And conduct and ethics, working as an effective and collaborative team. And again, here talks about having mutual trust, working with your superintendent to have that trust amongst all of you, pursuing some professional development opportunities. Again, you've got the conferences besides MSBA. I'm you, I'm sure you're a member of MRE too, aren't you as well? So you've got that as a so- as an association with resources. Question twenty-one talks about orientating new board members. So for the three new board members, tell me what kind of orientation you had. Dan or Casey or Drew?
Um, I guess I could say that we've had lots of conversations with um other board members, superintendent. Um, we, I've done training through MSBA. Um, I know we are in the process of setting up um meetings to do some additional training at the local level. But yeah, that's what I have.
Okay. Dan, do you want to add anything for, as far as orientation?
Oh, the MSBA was very helpful with understanding how everything works together. And um other than that, it's just getting to know people slowly. Especially with a lot of uh COVID stuff, it's hard to personally be a lot better.
Right, most definitely, most definitely. Thanks. And uh Drew, how about for you? I'm curious, did you set up mentors? Do you have mentors for new board members?
That would be me.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're you're mentor, Marissa?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And so tell me how you set up the mentors for your new board members.
Um, well, I know Mr. Horton had asked the three board members if they were interested in doing it. And I think I'm the only one that responded that was interested in doing that. So I've just kind of been a mentor for all of them as needed.
Perfect, perfect, great. And thank you for doing that too. So we do have a um new board member orientation year at a glance, which is on our website. And I will actually share that again. I'm going to do a summary for you of our discussion, so I will share that link as well. And uh for the new board members, they know that that was in the phase one manual. But making sure to just check off the things there so that uh you have been duly orientated. I know that there are additional things that your superintendent and board chair will likely share with you and continue to share with you. And then having a mentor is great, just that uh seasoned board member that can help answer questions, can check in with you if you have any concerns. And uh the only thing we say with a mentor is that your mentor should not tell you what to say at board meetings or how to vote. Because you know that once you took that oath of office, the job is yours. And now you get to stand on your own two feet and based on the information provided, make a decision at board meetings. So that takes us through the section under conduct and ethics. What questions, comments, anything you noticed that you want to talk about that I didn't address for you? Anything? I wish I'm going to keep scrolling, but we can, again, we can always go back. So the second standard is vision, having those clear goals and plans. And now you've got those clear goals and plans in place with uh your strategic plan. And here under this benchmark, it talks about um expressing that all students can learn, having high expectations for students and then fo- fostering that. having high expectations for students, and then fostering that culture of collaboration around a shared purpose of improving student achievement. And I think you've clearly addressed that in your new strategic plan as well. Also, under Vision Benchmark of Success B, that vision for the district. And that's exactly what you have just now completed with your strategic plan. And you included your stakeholders as well. And it will be so important to continue to keep your stakeholders, your strategic planning committee stakeholders and all other stakeholders in the loop and in form. So look for ways that you can involve them in things. Communicating rationale for decisions to the community. And again, we talked about this a little bit earlier, but making sure that as you're making the big decisions, like your strategic plan, I'll use that for an example again, but explaining the process that you went through. And then for other decisions, if you're making a decision on the budget, I think for each board member, it's always important to communicate your rationale for how you're feeling, how you're voting on something. But in general, helping the community know why you are making the decisions that you are making. Questions or comments about any of those? Okay. This set of questions is all about your district plan or your strategic plan. And so in another year, when you take this evaluation, I'm going to guess that your responses are pretty much all going to be always or most of the time. So you'll see that question 27 talks about in collaboration with the staff and the community, developing that strategic plan, the goals and the outcomes. So you have that accomplished. And then all of your ongoing work, your policies, your decision-making, and the budget that you set should be tied to that strategic plan. And continually monitoring progress towards those goals and outcomes. And that's something that you will hold your superintendent accountable for. At the same time, he will always be reporting to you on status and update as well. Anything with how that ties in? And that will be something that I think for you as a board, you'll want to make as your number one goal, number one priority in the new year is to really learn to work with your strategic plan and make decisions based on it. Okay, I'm still under vision and we're talking about student achievement and student achievement that is aligned with your district's plan. And again, that's something that you just heard about earlier under student achievement. So you are set and you have that direction, direction set for you for the next three to five years, knowing that you will have high expectations for students and be looking at student achievement. Okay, that wrapped up the vision section. Tell me what your thoughts are about vision. Any questions, concerns, anything you're wondering about? Okay, with structure, remember?
The vision piece is that I just want to thank our school board for going through the process, both of the strategic planning process and the self-evaluation. I think one, something that we talk with staff about sometimes is it's very, sometimes living in the moment can be all-consuming and really hard. I can feel like I can't get ahead and it takes work. You have to do the, you have to manage the here and now while you're trying to get ahead. And so we've had a lot of meetings lately and that's been intense. But thank you for doing the work to get ahead, because now that you get that strategic plan in place, now you can start working ahead and you get a little bit more on that proactive side. And I always try to say, we want to be, you know, we want to be mostly proactive, 75, 85% proactive. We still need to be responsive, but a lot of things get planned. And so you've done that work as a board. And so thank you for going through that process with Ms. Gilman, with myself, putting in the time as well as managing the here and now that we're trying to get past. So this will pay, I think this will help support and pay dividends as we move forward and make things also easier, not easy, but easier. As you kind of work through things and kind of look back to, okay, what was in our plan? And why are we going the direction we're going with some things? So I hope you find that helpful. And I think, I just want to thank you for going through that because I know it was extra effort.
I just have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Marissa.
The structure piece. So I noticed your strategic plan, we didn't have anything about our current buildings. Should we? Because obviously we all know that our building need work. I was just curious about that. Is that something that should be in our strategic plan or no?
It is in there for a 2025 goal. Gil, if you're looking at it right now. It was the facilities plan piece.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, that's good. That's a good time to talk about it. Yep.
We didn't say whether that was staying put. We didn't say it was a new building. We left that open for the board to kind of process and decide, you know, is this, are we staying put? Are we going to build something new? Are we going to do some renovations? Or, you know, whatever it is that we felt that would be. And we put, we put 2025 as a goal. It could happen sooner than that. But we pushed it out a little ways with the pandemic and just the time to get out of statutory operating debt. We didn't want to put that as like a 2023 goal.
Sure, okay. I must have missed it. I apologize.
No, that's okay. It's good to ask for clarification on that too.
And was that on the finance? Was it a finance goal?
It's under finance, yeah. And I do think as Mr. Horton said, you know, first and foremost, you have to address the SOD before you can really move on and talk about anything else. And so I think that's why it was probably, it was a good decision then to look at that in 2025. So you can get your, your financial status in order and then have those. And then at the same time, you can still be having those discussions about what you do as far as facility enhancements, if you're talking about building project, whatever it might be. But good, thank you for bringing that up, Marissa. Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, I'll walk you through the questions under Structure. So we're talking about safety and security for all. And as we look at structure, again, that's your physical structures and your organizational structures. So in these two questions, and again, Superintendent Horton, I'm hoping you're taking notes on the nevers and the don't knows. Because unless somebody shares, my guess is that these are opportunities for helping board members learn and understand some of these categories. But really with these two questions, your superintendent is the one that's going to ensure the facilities comply with the health, safety, security, and making sure that there's policies and practice in place to evaluate. As board members, you are going to be hearing those reports and updates. So you can hold your superintendent accountable for providing you with those updates. Under the next section, Benchmarks of Success B talks about employing, supporting quality teachers, administrators, and other staff, and then providing for their professional development. And this is one that every time I meet with the board, it's a good opportunity to discuss. Because as board members, you know, and you remember back from the board governance model, that you hire and supervise one employee, and that is your superintendent. Your superintendent then, in his management role, is responsible for supervising, evaluating, and providing staff development for all the other staff at the GFW School District. So as board members, when you think about these three questions, that a key word is ensuring that these are happening. And if you're unclear, which again, many of you could be unclear, being new to the board, of what the practices are. So at some point, it'd be a great study session or learning session, conversation, to just have your superintendent talk about how, what is your hiring practice? How do you retain staff? How do you evaluate? So you're not going to be hiring, evaluating, you're not going to be looking at personnel records or anything like that, but just knowing and ensuring that a process is in place. And likewise with staff development too. And the staff development was something that came out in the strategic plan, and that's actually been built into your strategic plan as well. So as board members, ensuring that those things happen. Anybody want to comment or ask questions about that section?
Ms. Gilman, I would just like to throw it to the board too, that is your, you know, as you said, to keep that, you know, take some notes and have this rubric in mind. As you look at this and think back to this as time goes on, please feel free to email me to say, hey, you know, I think this would be a great thing for us to learn about and know about. And that can turn into a board presentation. I can get a team together and share some of that information. And so, you know, please don't hesitate to say, hey, what can we get some info on this?
Very good. The next set of questions talk about the learning essentials, the curriculum, the technology, the facilities. And you have had lots of discussions about learning essentials in this past year with distance learning. And so in this section, it's just making sure that you have students that are meeting those graduation requirements. A lot of these tie back to your new strategic plan, student achievement focus area under the world's best workforce and the two goals that you have, the world's best workforce and the continuous improvement framework. So this is how you will be accountable for each of these. Curriculum support, a budget that supports staff development and resources for curriculum. Question 40 talks about having a process that includes community and parent involvement in selecting curriculum. In this one, it could be selecting curriculum, it could be other types of parent involvement. But tell me, what ways do you involve parents right now within the school district for any of the board members? Do you have a world's best workforce committee might be one, if you've got an advisory committee for that? Any examples? Parent committees?
This is the one I can honestly say that I answered, I don't know. I mean, I do know that like at the preschool level, there is like the parent advisory committee. So there are, there are parent involvement there. But this is one that I can say I answered. I wasn't quite sure.
And I think I answered never on this one, because I don't know if parents are included in selecting curriculum. And I think we can improve on this one.
Okay. Good. And I'm also thinking about your new strategic plan with the focus area of community and family engagement. So you've got something built in to help address that as well. But looking for ways that you can keep that involvement in an advisory capacity, because obviously you as board members have to take all the information that comes to you and use it to make a decision. Okay. Let's see, under structure, here we're talking about evaluating and updating your technology and then a long-term facilities plan in place for construction and maintenance. And so, you know, again, your superintendent is responsible for question 42 with evaluating and updating technology. Overseeing that, you have an excellent support with Mr. Warner. I've come to learn too in this role to assist you. And question 43 goes back to Marissa's question before about long-term facilities and what the plan is. And so making sure that you do have something in place for that. And this set of questions, it talks about the classrooms, effective instructional practices and evaluation of district operations to make sure that there's an efficient and effective learning environment. And from your new strategic plan, that ties in beautifully underneath, again, student achievement in the, especially the, well, both the first and the second goal. So you have that built in for you. And I think this is the last set of questions for structure. This all relates to the budget and the financial statement. And you've definitely addressed your finances in your new strategic plan. Question 46 talks about keeping the community informed of your financial status. And I would say if there's one thing that you have had a lot of discussion about in a very public way, it has been your budget. So keeping the community informed. And question 47, it talks about public input into the budget process. You have your public hearing on an annual basis. But if there are other ways that you can continue to educate the community on the budgeting process and just helping them understand right now the education on the SOD, but also that there are, to put it in real layman's terms, pots of money that are designated for certain areas of school district funding. And you can't use one pot of money to pay for the other and educating the community on what an appropriate fund balance is for you. So thinking about ways that you can share that information on an ongoing basis. And the rest of these tie into budget development that relates to your strategic plan so that you are setting your budget based on the goals of your strategic plan. Questions about any of those with finances? Okay. Then we move on to accountability. And a lot of this is accountability with student achievement and how you get to that point. And again, you'll see a strategic plan written all over this under accountability. Here we're talking about timely review of your strategic plan. So obviously you have done a very deep dive of your strategic plan this year. And what you want to make sure to do in subsequent years is to not only have those ongoing updates, but also set aside some time, a year from now, roughly a year from now, to just do an update. Did we say what we are, did we do what we said we were going to do? And are there some other new action steps to move each of the objectives forward in meeting those goals? So as you look at these, you can see again how important it is to have that strategic plan tied into the school improvement plans. That's definitely mentioned in your new strategic plan. Making, making sure you review. And then question 54 talks about recognizing the efforts of schools in improving student learning. So how can you tell those good stories when student learning has improved? Next, under accountability, your superintendent. So we talked earlier about the strategic governance framework and having the goals from your strategic plan align with your goals as a board and with your superintendent's goals. And this talks about making sure that you have written goals with specific outcomes. It also says making sure that you provide an evaluation, a review for your superintendent on an annual basis, and then communicate those expectations. So you know that as a board, you can go into closed session to conduct the annual review for your superintendent. And then when you come out of that annual assessment, you want to share an update with your community that here were the goals from the last year, your superintendent has met those goals. And for the new year, there are new goals that your superintendent will be working on. And then I always want to remind board members that as you are setting goals for your superintendent, you'll want to think about quality versus quantity. So identifying one or two goals to really focus on in the new year versus 15 will be much more attainable. And keeping in mind that your superintendent is still managing all the other operations of the district. So for you in the new year, So for you in the new year, it feels like a number one goal is the financial status. That might be something that you'll want to hold your superintendent accountable for. And then, um, a, a segment of your strategic plan. But with that, I'm, I'm going to ask, Mr. Horton, is, um, has the board used the MSBA superintendent evaluation? Form and any other comments you'd like to make about that too?
Uh, we have not, um, the, the, some of the things that we've done up to this point were, um, in the hundred day plan. We outlined some objectives and worked with the board to kind of develop some of that. In particular, the board chair, and then we kind of shared them out to the community. And then, uh, reported back on those, I think in October, so probably around a hundred and twenty days or something like that. And I kind of had some next steps from there, but we have not gone through the, um, the MSBA evaluation piece either. Whether that be the goal setting, the competencies, or a blending of those. So that's a, that is an area that we could, uh. Now that we've gone through the strategic process, just planning process, it invites that conversation, I think, very naturally.
Most definitely. And I did, for the materials that were shared with the board for this evening, I did share a copy of the document for the superintendent's. Uh, evaluation, it's a document that was created by the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. Which is the association for superintendents and then also Minnesota School Boards Association. So it gives you a step-by-step of how to conduct the evaluation, how to set goals. And then even some criteria to measure, um, um, meets, exceeds, needs work on, those kinds of things. So do make sure that you conduct that annual evaluation. Once in a while, I talk to boards where they're, uh, nervous about doing that. And I think in fact, most superintendents are happy to have that evaluation. Because they are wanting to serve you in the best way possible. So do make sure that you take that time, set those goals. And you are always welcome to contact me or any of my colleagues at MSBA if you have any questions. And again, that tool is part of your packet. It's also on our MSBA website too, so you can always access it there. Anybody have any questions or comments? Go ahead.
I see, yeah, I would agree with that. Um, MA, if I recall correctly, usually MASA and MSBA co-present the competencies and the goals, um, at the leadership conference. Unfortunately, we had that virtually this year, we couldn't do it in person. But, uh, hopefully next year, we'll be able to do that back again in person and we can get the board to, to, to go with that, to that. But I would agree with that and echo that, that most superintendents, including myself, welcome the evaluation process. We, we like to know what it is that you're looking for. So we can be working on that and strategic plans are helpful with that as well. It gives us some direction. So, uh, definitely welcome that process, yes. I, I tell our staff all the time that evaluations are a great time to sit down and have a professional conversation about how things are going. And how, how, um, I can be, or principals can be supportive of them and reaching their goals. And celebrate the things that are going well and help support them in making the things that they want to get better at happen.
Great, thank you for that. Okay. We're. Next segment under accountability is measuring student academic progress and needs based on valid and reliable assessments. And so these are all talking about. Reviewing the data. Having discussions at the board. Looking at how you can improve student performance, looking at any kind of data that's available. And you'd again, definitely have included that in your strategic plan. And many times I tell boards that you should obsess about the results for your students. This last year has been a real challenge and I am guessing, I'm not sure where things are at in GFW. But in many districts, there's a, a sense that there will be some movement backwards. Before you can start moving forward again, just because of the pandemic and, and distance learning. But certainly be asking those questions because this is what it's all about, is student achievement for all. Questions or comments about any of those items? Or anything else in that accountability section? And if not, we'll move on to the last section. So this last one talks about advocacy and communication and how you tell your story. And a lot of the things in this category are going to tie back to, again, your strategic plan under the community. And family engagement. And question sixty-two, it talks about advocating at the state and local level. And at the responses, there was a lot of don't knows in this particular one. But do know that one of the ways you are already doing that is through the governmental relations process that we have at MSBA. So for new board members, you'll learn that there will be an opportunity for you to move forward. Through the advocacy tours, any legislative platforms. Um, we will do that on your behalf and it really does start grassroots at your level. So if you have thoughts about anything that should. Be addressed in the legislature, you'll have an opportunity in, um, late summer, early fall to bring those forward. And then we have a process in place where we start pulling together all of the. Ideas from all the school districts. And we have our governmental relations team who are at the Capitol lobbying on your behalf. And then they're monitoring all the other legislation as well. So if, again, if you haven't already done this, the Friday chats are awesome. Fridays at nine AM, nine to nine thirty. And Denise Dietrich and Kim Lewis give you a quick update of where things are at in the legislature. And keep you informed and there's also a chance to ask questions as well. But that's one way that you have to advocate. And then certainly as board members, you always want to make sure that you take time to keep your local decision makers informed as well. Your local legislators. Um, question sixty-three, I, I, I want to just mention it because you are addressing it in your strategic plan. Modeling the cultural, racial and ethnic understanding and sensitivity. And so with your focus area of diversity, equity and inclusion, you will be addressing that. Let's see, question sixty-five, I always like to address this and especially with a newer group of board members. Earlier when we talked under conduct and ethics about written protocols. In addition, as board members, one of your protocols should be, how are you going to respond to questions? And comments, um, as board members, I'm sure you get emails, you get phone calls, you get text messages. You probably get stopped at the elevator at school events in the grocery store. And so do you have a process for how you respond to questions? And I'm just going to open that back up to the board. What, what is your process right now? Do you have a process for responding?
You know, I know for sure we have a process if they email the entire board and our chair is supposed to respond. For that, as far as if we're out in the community, I don't know if I've ever got any official guidance on that.
Okay.
Okay. Other than maybe some MSBA training.
Okay. Any other board members want to weigh in what your understanding is for question sixty-five?
Ms. Gilman, I'm not sure if you know this, but we have a grocery store owner on the board. So that example in the MSBA training, uh, video, as well as your example there, uh, we, we have one here.
And it wasn't Mokels from Mankato, right? Very good. So in that case, you might get a lot of comments at the grocery store, possibly. I think one of the things, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I do, and I mean. I listen and, um. I use the MSB training so far and then, you know, try to direct them to the appropriate person, so.
Good, thank you for that. And I, I think as a, a board, at some point, when you're talking about board protocols, you may want to just have a discussion about what your response is. Many times we talk about having an elevator speech, which when our constituents, our stakeholders come to us. It, I mean, it is so important that we're open, that we listen to them, that we're grateful. At the same time, we want to help our community know that as an individual board member, I, I can't solve or fix anything. But I can direct them to who can provide some assistance. And I appreciated, um, Marissa's comment too. When you have, when you receive emails and I, I'm sure you receive a lot of them. When they are sent to the board chair, it is always best, or when that is sent to the entire board, it's always best, I think, for your board chair to respond. And many times the response can just be, you know, very simp, short and sweet, saying, thank you so much for contacting me. Or thank you so much for contacting board members. We are ceasing our superintendent on this reply and he will follow up with you. So, um, the messaging can be clear and that can vary from district to district. Sometimes the board chair takes the lead on that. Many times it's the superintendent. But just knowing as a board team, what your protocol is going to be and how you're going to respond, I think can just be very helpful. But bottom line is, you do need to listen and you do need to be gracious. I always tell the story, I was working with a board in another school district. And when we started talking about this, the individual said, nah, I don't deal with them. I don't answer their calls, I don't respond to emails. And when I see him, I say, don't tell me about this, go talk to the superintendent. And I said, well, that's kind of good, but you, you might want to be a little bit more gracious in the whole process. Because many times people see us as a first point of contact. And the interesting thing is, I did notice that that individual got defeated at the next election. I don't know if that had anything to do with it or not, but it was just kind of an interesting coincidence. But, so I would not recommend that approach. Uh, you know, find ways to be, be caring, be kind, and then help educate and help direct votes to the proper channels.
Ms. Gilman, this is a, I think, an opportunity to tie back a couple of things you've mentioned earlier too. It's, um, I don't believe there's an MSBA model policy on this, but some districts have adopted what they call a, a chain of command policy. Or something like that, which gives board members kind of some support and backing to say, as a board, this is kind of how we do this. And then you can kind of point to that, so it, it doesn't, it helps with new board members, but also gives you support to say that this is, this is a board decision. And it personalizes it a little bit. So if that is ever something the board is interested in, we could look at that and that would, you know, when we look at the governance model, that would be the board developing that policy. And what you want that to look like. And then we would pass that, assuming board approves it and, and then do that.
Thanks for mentioning that. I, I just made a note too, that yes, we do have a, a chain of command, um, model, a diagram. And I will share that with you again, when you're discussing board protocol, board practices, that'd be a great one to talk through. Each school district has a chain of command that is a little different depending upon who is at the helm. So in some cases, it, let's say somebody comes to you and they do have a concern about a teacher. You know, the chain of command would be go back to the teacher. And if you, they've done that and it hasn't worked, then it would be go to the principal. And some school districts, it might be an assistant principal and then a principal. And sometimes it could move up the chain of command to a. Supervisor of staff, ultimately superintendent, and then finally the board. And so usually the questions and concerns shouldn't get to you as board members. Because it will have been addressed through that chain of command. But I will send that to you and that'll be a, a good discussion piece for all of you too. Thank, great. Um, let's see. In, uh, question sixty-six, ensuring the public's well-informed about board's roles and responsibilities. Kind of ties into having that elevator speech of what your role is. And this set of questions, it talks about. Making sure that decisions are communicated district-wide. So how do you communicate and what's your messaging? And I think a lot of that for you and your new strategic plan will be addressed in your community and family engagement as well. How you keep those channels of communication open. And these are the last two questions. It talks about soliciting input. And this is very interesting. Um, question seventy says, seek community and staff input in its decision-making to gain community and staff support. So I think the messaging is to ask the questions, listen. If somebody comes to you with ideas, you can say, you know, I, I'm open to ideas and suggestions. At the end of the day though, question seventy-one indicates that as board members, you take all that information. You synthesize it, you process it at the board table with your fellow board members. And then that's when you consider, come together and make a decision. So just because a staff member or I as your community member say, this is what you ought to do, doesn't mean it's going to happen. Because you as board members know that there's a bigger picture out there on many decisions. So you take everything into account and based on the feedback, based on the things that, uh, you know, that tie into the budget or your strategic plan. You make a decision based on that. So that's the advocacy and communication section. Anybody have any questions or comments about anything in that category? Or any of the other sections that we've talked about this evening?
Okay, I am. Just going over, I think just going over the process will help. Me prepare and kind of going forward, you know, how to improve. And, you know, hopefully use our strategic planning thing for us to continue to. Move forward now, I think it'd be interesting next year to see the difference.
Mm-hmm. Exactly, thanks for that comment, Drew. I think it, it will really help all of you focus, work together. Comments from other board members? Just in general, on the strategic planning process and on the review of the. Self-evaluation tonight, takeaways for you. So Drew's is a good one, I think, going over the process will help you as you make decisions. What are some other takeaways from tonight and from the process over the last few months?
I just think it's been great to focus on, you know, what is our vision? You know, what is our mission? And just sharing with the community where we're going from here and just including everyone along in the process. And I thought the self-evaluation was great, just to see, um, areas that we can work on as a board and work together and kind of grow together.
Good, thanks for that, Marissa. Dan or Jason or Casey?
Yeah, I'll, I kind of echo what, um, Marissa said. I mean, and being new, and I'm sure Dan and, um, Drew can, can concur as well. I mean, it's just, there's a lot right away and, um, it's just kind of information overload. And, um, we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, screw up too bad. So we, you know, try to take in advisements from everybody and ask questions. And, um, and no, I think this is great. I mean, going over and, um, I mean, I answered a lot of, I don't knows to a lot of those things because there is a lot to learn yet. So.
Right.
Little steps, I think, help us all make bigger steps in the future.
Good, thanks for that, Casey. And that's the, uh, the power of being a team too, that while you are on information overload, you've got your teammates that can help share with that. And I think, um, one of my colleagues always talks about, um, so much information, it hurts my brain. And sometimes that might be how you feel too, so much information that your brain starts to hurt too much, it takes up too much brain power. But anyway, it is a lot to learn early on.
No, and I just hope too, that the communities take time to watch this video, just because I think sometimes it's hard for them to understand what truly our role is. And, and that's, I think, been difficult. I think sometimes they feel that we have more power in certain areas than we really do. So that's something that I struggle with as a board member.
Yeah, that's good feedback. I, I think that probably happens with a lot of, a lot of board members where the community, because, and you are, you are different from. A county commissioner or a city counselor or a township official or legislator. You know, your power again is at, as you come together at the table with your superintendent and helping the community understand that is important. And sometimes we, um, have been elected by certain constituency groups too. You know, we might have. An organization, an association that has supported us and then. And then once we're on the board, they think that, oh, now Gail will do this because we elected her. And when you get on the board, you realize that, wow, that was great that you had the constituents that helped support you. There really is a much bigger picture. And you start to see that there are a lot of factors to take into account. So, you know, you have to, and then you have to start balancing that as a board member, too. Because, you know, I had constituents that were supportive of me when I was elected to the board and, you know, had the, and I don't know if that's happened with any of you, but, you know, you have that where you have to explain that fine balance that, yeah, I know this is important. At the same time, we have all these things to take into account. I actually think that's why you're, again, your strategic plan will be very helpful for you, too, because you can always go back to that in what your direction is, what your focus is. And plus, you, you have a team that you can work with, so.
You know, remember, Lee, I think you bring up a really good point. And I would even echo that as a superintendent, that people don't understand what a superintendent does sometimes.
Right.
And, and how my role fits with other leaders' roles or staff members or whatever. So perhaps that could be a communication thing that we could do is we could start doing some, maybe that's something the board would be interested in is through our regular communications that we, we share some of that information out and try to draw some attention to that to help bring some clarity and to help them. You know, I'm not suggesting that we need to have a chain of command policy. That'd be for the board to consider. But if we had something like that or had written protocols or whatever, those could be things we could communicate. I would say, hey, you know, this is, this is how we do it. And sometimes I think that just helps people so they understand the process. They're willing to follow it if they just know what that is.
Good feedback. And it is a fine line that you dance because remember, I always say this, you're, as a board team, you are hinged together. And you're all getting perspectives. Your superintendent needs to do kind of the juggling, the balancing act, too, because he's also an advocate for the staff and, you know, wanting to make sure that all the lines of communication are open. So he's communicating to you about staff needs and, you know, you're communicating with him based now on the goals of your strategic plan. So it, it is a balancing act, but it's also one that, that I know you can, you can handle. Other comments? Dan, how about you? Thoughts, takeaways from the process, both in the last weeks and also this evening? Things that have been helpful or not helpful, struck a nerve with you?
I'm getting sick of computer screens.
Are you? That's a very honest, I think a lot of us are, actually. That's right.
Just not used to this.
Yeah.
Outside person. But, no, everything's been going pretty decent. MSBA was a lot of help. And I don't know, this survey has helped, too, so you can kind of see what's going on, so.
Yep. Good. I'm glad. Because again, it's just so much to learn when you're new. Now, Dan, I do have to say, one of the benefits for me of you being on the screen is, one of the evenings, we got to see one of your cute little children. And that probably wouldn't have happened if we were in person. So that, you know, I don't get to see the little ones so often, so that, that made my night. So that was good. One of the pluses. Great. And let's see, Jason, are you still with us? Are you able to share a takeaway for you?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm, I don't know, listening to a lot of it. I've been through a lot of it already in the past. You know, I can look back at what I did catch on the conversations. I mean, we've done evaluations, you know, yearly and this year being different, you know, with the COVID and that kind of stuff. We didn't get together like we normally do at the meeting up in the cities. That's usually where we've done it in the past.
Right.
It's, it's, it's been a long road for, especially for new board members. It's been a tough, well, even for some of the old ones, it's been kind of a tough year, last couple of years. But protocols and that kind of stuff, I mean, we've, we've done, I thought, really well with that. You know, it's pretty much having the conversations with the people, taking it in and, you know, saying that, you know, we'll talk to the superintendent, we'll talk to the board. When, I don't know, you get used to it as you go.
Are you saying it gets a little bit easier each year? Is that safe to say?
You know what? You get a little thicker skin.
You do, too. You still, I mean, you're, you're always going to have that emotional side of everything because they're, you know, you're, you're human and you're working with staff and you're working with the most important resource in the district, and that's your students. But yes, I think the more you experience all the different roles and responsibilities of being on the board, you start to have a better understanding and you put it into perspective.
Yeah, and I think, you know, through time, you know, there's a lot of things that communities don't get to hear. And, and, you know, that kind of stuff that they may not understand, you know, listening to tonight will help if they do. But a lot of stuff that gets done in the inner part of it that they don't, they don't see, which makes it, it makes it tough for us.
Right.
Because we do know a little bit more information, but that's why we're put there.
Exactly. You've been given that trust by the community. And, and then they have to, just as you trust each other as a board team, the community has to trust, too, that you are making decisions based on all the information that you have, some of which you, you many times can't share either, might tie into data privacy.
Right.
Very good. Any other comments, feedback, takeaway for this evening?
Just as a new board member, I'll just say that, you know, with things coming up fast, Superintendent Horton has always been available and for us to contact. And any questions that I've had with that, which has been great, as long as, as well as fellow experienced board members, you know, if I've had a question to them, they've been able to do that and help with certain things. So that's appreciative and I just wanted to thank you. And hopefully we can learn from this and use our strategic plan to continue to, you know, be positive and build a good GFW school district.
Great. Thank you for that. Yeah, this is just your opportunity to really lean into one another. And I just think you have a great board. You've got your seasoned board members and you've got your new board members with your new ideas, your new thoughts. And you're just in a lot of, I think in many ways, a lot of fun time of transition. Some, maybe it doesn't seem real fun to you some days, but I just think you have just lots of great things going on. You are all very, very capable individuals to be on the board. So your community should be very proud of who they have elected. And I know that you have all put a lot of energy into making the right decisions, the best decisions in the best interest of all, your students. So with that, I am going to wrap up. Now, your superintendent said that we had to go till nine thirty tonight. But, yeah, you know, we scheduled the three hours, two to three hours. He said, well, no, we got to go to nine thirty, but I think we're just not going to listen to him. I think, I think we've done enough now for one evening, but I do.
Early, we don't let board members out of board meetings early.
Oh, I see. Julie says she's ready to go, too. But I just want to say thank you for allowing me to come into your district and for being able to assist you with your strategic plan. It was a great honor. It was fun getting to work with all of you, to meet all of you. And this won't be the end or goodbye because I'm always available. So don't hesitate to connect with me. Give me a call, send me an email. I'm available to answer your questions and support you. And if there are ever any times where I can come back and provide any additional information or serve as a resource at a board meeting, don't hesitate to contact me. I wish you the best of luck with your strategic plan. I'm very proud of what you've developed. I think you and your strategic planning committee did a great job. I think you're well on your way. So with that, I will turn it back to, I think, your vice chair, Mr. Haas.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
You're very welcome.
Right. Do we have any discussion that we want between the board right now or?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
No, we got, I think we've still got to go through, do we want to accept that? The strategic plan? We have to make a motion for that first?
I think that there was going to be a few edits made based on discussion tonight. So probably coming back April nineteenth, I believe, is what was kind of
All right.
The meeting. So I think unless the board wants to do something tonight, that, I think that's where we have taken it earlier.
Okay. All right.
I think we can, I think we can put on the nineteenth meeting.
You're going to table it for the next meeting? That's what I'm assuming.
Yep.
So, all right, well, that's tabled for the next meeting, then we'll take a motion to adjourn then.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. Well, then that's all in favor.
Well, how about Marissa?
There we go.
Yes.
All right, Merkel.
Yes.
Taz.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Gail.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Everybody.